Those are the things that help if we haven't thought about.
What was your question?
Yeah, I just got a lot of questions, but a couple of observations. I'm a staff employee, hand in hand, and I see windows open all the time, unlocked. And it's a matter of learning how to latch them properly. And when you think you latch them, just try opening them, see what happens. Sometimes you're not pushed all the way in and the latch is not in the locked position.
It's very difficult.
And secondly, we were talking about breaking into cars. A lot, even if this stuff is not valuable, if you have an empty box in there and someone sees that from outside, they accuse, and so they'll break the glass to see what's in there. So even if it's not valuable, don't leave it there.
Right, and sometimes they just don't care. They want to get in your car and see what's in there, or they just want to test you, right? It's just a crime of real quick enough. But those are all good observations. Yes, sir.
Yesterday, ABC just announced that the Denver metro area is the worst, the worst for car thefts in the whole country.
Wow.
That's true.
And I don't doubt it. I really don't, because we were just talking about how we're recovering cars on a day. Yesterday, up in my district, I recovered five cars on one property that were stolen because it was just a.
More cars get stolen here than anywhere else in the whole country.
We've, I think we've recovered probably six or seven cars this week.
It's not a stop.
There's probably two more on my blog. They don't have plates, and I've already called like a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, ma'am.
In our area, we kind of have a community watch. And one thing that we're finding out that targets our area are cars that have no tags in the front or in the back. And then I'm wondering why they can drive around on the streets and they're not stopped by the police.
Sometimes they are, sometimes they're not. We just don't have the units right now because we're running into hot calls. I'm just going to be honest with you. We're going to so many priority calls, we don't have the traffic enforcement units available to go be proactive in that. So I understand what you're saying. I mean, we try to, but it's just not there right now. It really isn't. I mean, I wish I could tell you that I could go and take a shift and just go stop the cars and see are they stolen? Are they just not registered? Has COVID affected? Because, you know, it takes time now to get registered, make your appointment. I get all that. We're reasonable with that, as long as you got your license and insurance, but that's a great observation. Yes.
I'd just like to say thank you. Thank you to you who are.
I do have one piece of good news, and I gathered this information because Councilmember Sundberg had asked for this during the Council Six Four meeting a couple of weeks ago. He wanted the crime index numbers for the last couple of years, from 2019 to the end of 2021. And it had steadily gone up from a total of around 6,700 crimes for the major crime indexes like murder, assault, burglary, robberies, those kinds of major crime index crimes. And it had gone up 10%, then 22% in 2020. In the last six months of December 2020, which was the last six months that we, that we had measured, it went down 5%, 4.7%. And that is actually significant. So in Aurora, a 5% decrease in crime. So while it seems like we are being bombarded with bad news every single day, it has actually gone down 5% in Aurora. So that is a good thing. So that makes us at least go.
With our city as well.
Take a little deep breath of that, because we now are seeing a little bit of a decrease in crime in Aurora. So that is good, and we are hoping that with these people that you see up here now, that we're going to continue that trend, because we are now getting more police. We are now retaining more police, hopefully. And so with those things that are happening, we are hopefully going to continue to see that decrease in crime. So that's, with that being said.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that we're running into hot calls, assuming that we're down to your police houses. Do you care to realize how far down we are in this parkage right now?
Well, I think we, at last count, we were down from January of 2020 to now 187 police.
I understand what the retention bonuses that they've been provided by the Aurora Council. How do you believe that those retention bonuses will help keep numbers? Just retain or keep the folks that we have, or attract additional?
I think both. Well, because, I mean, because police talk to police, police recruits. When they, when they want to come to prospective departments, the first thing they do is they come talk to the existing officer and say, what is it like to move to Aurora? And so now they'll say, people will say, well, it's getting better. It's getting better.
Officer Lek, if I could jump in really quickly.
We'll stop the question.
We're going to move on, so I'm going to have our district attorney talk next. But to that question specifically, Max, at our public safety meeting, which will actually be held next Wednesday. It was supposed to be tomorrow, but we had to push it off. We've asked the police chief and deputy city manager, Jason Bachelor, who sits on top of the police department, to bring forward a plan to help us not just retain, but also track officers. So it's going to take, we said when we passed those retention bonuses, it was a first step. And we mean that. We know that it is not something that's going to solve all of our problems. But it was a first step to address a very critical need and making sure that we didn't lose more officers. But that plan will be presented to public safety next Wednesday at 8:30 a.m. But we recognize that in order to address this growing problem of crime in our city, that having a fully staffed, fully funded police department is critical, and we're making sure that's a priority on public safety. One last question.
It's not a question, it's a quick comment, because along the lines with the bonuses and stuff, all those things are good. But we've got to be doing things, like you said, supporting the police in, in order to improve the morale in the department. Because if the morale is in the toilet, you, you know, like you said, not many folks are going to want to come here. And rightly so, so I think we're on the right track, and we just got to keep doing whatever we got to do. You know, the bonuses, holding the police chief accountable to turn that morale around. I mean.
Officer Lek, before we kick it over to the district attorney, did you want to mention that, what was on the table that the cards didn't have there?
Oh, yeah, so this is, I brought these for everybody. This is an access Aurora. It's put out by the city, and this is just a reference guide for some phone numbers. It's handy to have around the house in case you need phone numbers. So grab these and pick them up if you need more. I think there's a couple more up here. So if you need more, they're, they're up here. You can grab them.
Whereas is that accessible online anywhere?
It is. It's also nice to have if you just need it.
So I mean, you know, if there's not enough, you know, some of us can print it out.
Yeah, yeah, so there's more up here, and we can get you more if you need them.
One last thing I was going to tell you guys. I've been here 23 years, as long as Judy. But I work with a bunch of heroes, and they give every call they handle for you, everything they've got. So even though we're short, don't think that you're getting just half the job, okay? Keep some faith in us. We're doing our best.
Thank you. So next up, obviously, crime is an important topic. It's something that we heard about throughout the campaign. I know that a lot of the colleagues who've been on council for some time have heard about it. We asked the district attorney to come and speak tonight about two programs in his office, that his office has been working on. It's hard to narrow it down when you're talking about crime. There's so many important initiatives that his office is taking. But I'm going to introduce John Kellner, our district attorney, to talk about a couple of initiatives in his office.
Good, okay, great. Thank you, council members, for inviting me to speak about crime and a few of the things that we're doing within my office to try and help things better in our, make things better in our community. I'm starting to think that maybe I should be talking about motor vehicle theft. But the two things they asked me to talk about tonight were our diversion program and then our work with a group called Raven, which is the Regional Anti-Violence Enforcement Network, which is a fancy sounding name for a state and federal task force where we're working hand in hand with law enforcement, to include APD, to go after the people who are sort of the worst of the worst, the shooters out there right now. People that are committing some of the most violent crime and trafficking the most drugs. So two very opposite ends of the spectrum that we're going to talk about tonight. All right, folks, a little bit about me, maybe this will work, maybe not. Hey, here we go. Okay, so folks, I was a Marine Corps judge advocate before joining the Boulder County District Attorney's Office. Worked some cold cases there, ended up joining the DA's office in 2013 here in the 18th Judicial District. And helped start our cold case unit, became a chief deputy, was prosecutor of the year for the entire state of Colorado, and the prosecution team of the year for mother's and drunk driving for my work, really going after some of the repeat drunk drivers that were hurting people and killing folks in our communities. I was very fortunate to be elected as the district attorney in 2020, and I'm honored to serve as your DA. What is the 18th Judicial District? For those that don't know, of course, you're sitting in it right now. It's a Rappo, Douglas, Elbert, and Lincoln Counties, which makes it the most populated judicial district in the state of Colorado, with about 1.1 million Coloradans calling it home now. Now, with a district that big and that diverse, really, when I say diverse, it's not just, you know, geographically diverse. We've got incredibly different communities. And when we're talking about Aurora, that problems with crime in Aurora are not necessarily the same in Castle Rock. And just earlier today, you might have seen a press conference down in Douglas County about a double homicide. We're working that case hand in hand with the sheriff's office. And right before I got here, there's an officer involved shooting in Aurora. My office works hand in hand with the police to resolve those issues as well and investigate them. So what happens in a general year, this is something I just want to, you know, touch on very briefly for you. In 2019, we filed in my office about 32,000 cases. So these are state cases. They're not the municipal court cases that you might see. Some of the tickets that get given out by Aurora Police Department are from municipal cases. This is state level. About 5,500 felony cases filed in 2019. That took a nosedive in 2020 when COVID hit. A lot of factors behind that, but you can see we had a pretty big dip. About 26,000 cases filed in my office in 2020. Many, many factors, primarily COVID related, that caused that. But we're continuing to see that sort of same trajectory in cases from 2021. It's not much different than 2020, even though some of the COVID factors were not quite at play. Again, many factors on that. I'd love to talk to you about it more, but I know I'm on a time crunch here. What do we do in the DA's office? We do all of these things. We, of course, file the cases that the police department send to us. They send us something they think has probable cause, like, hey, a person committed this crime, and we believe this person did it. Then my office has to make the ethical decision. Do we have enough evidence that we can actually admit in court and prove beyond a reasonable doubt that this person who's alleged to have committed the crime did it? So our standard is different, and it's much higher than what the police deal with. And so sometimes they might present us a case, and we say, look, please go back to the drawing board. Maybe we'll help you work on this case. Maybe we can investigate it. Maybe we'll take it to the grand jury. Or we'll take it, file it. We might resolve it with a plea agreement. When you have 32,000 cases in a year, there is no way you can try every single one of those cases. So about 97% of the cases resolve through some kind of plea agreement. And then we try to take those certain cases to trial, respect your time as potential jurors, of course, on taking some of the most serious cases to trial. We do a lot with victim services. We do a lot with diversion, with consumer product protection, and problem solving courts as well. So I want to talk to you about diversion. I mentioned in the very beginning, these are two very different things. Diversion is really for the low level offenders, people with lower risk profiles. And then on this far other side, we're talking about going after some of the worst of the worst with our Raven Task Force. So diversion, what does this mean? When somebody basically enters into the justice system, we have an option. When I told you about, you know, whether or not we're going to charge a case, we have an option to say, look, we're not going to charge this, but we do require you to go into this program that says, look, you know, maybe the issue here is something we can deal with with treatment. Maybe something we can deal with restorative justice in the community, where maybe a kid who sprayed paint on somebody's property, and they don't really understand what it means, you know? What does it do to that business that has to then deal with the aftermath of that graffiti? The kid thought it was just a no big deal. We help them understand how that really impacts everybody else in our community. So diversion is an opportunity for us to take folks on the lower level spectrum of criminal risk profiles, give them an opportunity to go through a program. It's usually six to nine months long. If they complete every aspect of that program, the case will be dismissed. And we try to do that because we recognize that people that end up with a criminal record, it can follow them around forever, it can have negative repercussions, when perhaps the issue at hand was really a mistake. You know, bad judgment. It doesn't need to define you moving forward. We're particularly proud of what we do with diversion for juveniles. I'm going to talk a bit more about this, but our diversion program has 15 master's level therapists in it. They work for my office. There are four different offices spread out across the judicial district. And what we do is when somebody comes into the program, they get an individualized assessment. So every case is going to be a little different, and we want to match the right kind of treatment needs and the right amount of accountability with that person's needs. We do all kinds of different things with this. Some of it's experiential therapy. This is particularly effective with young folks. What I mean by that is they might take them out to animal assisted therapy, working with horses. It tends to really calm kids down, grounds them in a different kind of way. A lot of times, art therapy is particularly effective with juveniles as well. I know that might sound a little touchy feely for some folks when you're thinking, hey, somebody committed a crime. But the goal, of course, for the criminal justice system is not just to punish people. It's to make sure they don't come back into that justice system. That's good for us all together. Okay, so who's right for diversion? As I mentioned, we're typically dealing with a lower to moderate risk profile. Somebody with maybe one case, maybe two. We are not looking at, you know, taking people that have three prior convictions for felony motor vehicle theft into diversion. That's not what this program is about. For juveniles, we're talking about 10 to 17 year olds, boys, girls. We're multilabel. The average length of the program is six to nine months. Now, before anybody thinks it's just a, you know, freebie, there is a contract that goes with it. We expect that they are going to meet the requirements of the program. And if they don't, that case will go back into the justice system. So there is an outcome that if they do not participate, if they really fail to live up to their end of the bargain, well, then the repercussions might be more serious in the justice system. This is how it works. We work hand in hand with law enforcement. They send cases to us. We, at that point, either go to the diversion route or into court, and sometimes from court back into diversion. Restorative justice, you know, this is a word that you hear more and more. And really what we're talking about here is getting people to internalize that their actions sometimes, you know, go much farther or felt much farther beyond just themselves. So an example of this might be, you know, again, I was talking about the graffiti case. But let's say somebody was, broke into a car and stole, you know, a laptop out of that car. They can have the opportunity, and this is victim driven, if the victim wants to sit down in a sort of moderated environment, say, look, young man, you know, my work was on that. And for two or three days, I wasn't able to do my job, and that really impacted me. And it really hurt my kids. My kids felt like something that was safe no longer feels safe. So that's really important for people to understand, because sometimes they just don't get that connection with how their actions impact others, especially when we're talking about juveniles. I mentioned how cases get returned to diversion. This is it. Am I doing on time?
You're good.
I'm flying through stuff, guys. This is something we're really proud of. Our juvenile diversion program, I think, is the top program in the state. We send 40% of our juvenile cases to diversion. So in 2020 numbers, 412 cases referred to diversion. And really, we had about a little over 1,000 juvenile cases filed altogether.
What's, what's the rate of recidivism?
Great question. You beat me to it. My very next slide.
There we go.
6.7% of the juveniles that complete our program go on to recidivate. Now, 6.7% is a phenomenal number. Because what we're talking about here is a general system of probation and parole and other more heavy handed outcomes for people that have been through the justice system more often, that has about a 50% recidivism rate in the state of Colorado, which makes us the fourth or fifth worst, depending on how you measure it, in the entire country for recidivism. So taking innovative programs like this and really trying to match it up, especially with juveniles, so they don't come back into the system later, and having a great outcome like that, of just about 6.7%, is tremendously effective and important for our community. Yes, sir.
How is it that you're working with parents concerning these kids?
Oh, yeah, I mean, if we're talking about juveniles, parents have to be involved with this. And we found actually during COVID, when we started transitioning more to remote therapy sessions at times, parents were even more involved than they were before, because there's no more excuses on, hey, I couldn't take off maybe 30 minutes over lunch to join in this important program for my kid. So none of this happens without parental consent, of course. You know, we're not that heavy handed when it comes to government. Parents need to be involved, right? And oftentimes, they want to be involved, and when they are, the more involved they are, frankly, the better outcomes we get. Okay, adult diversion. This is something I really wanted to expand upon. When we saw the success with kids, we, of course, want to make sure we're offering, again, to the right level offenders, right, an opportunity of diversion for adults as well. So we launched, it was about June of last year, a new program to help deal with adults that are struggling with addiction. I mean, you hear about it all the time. Fentanyl, opioid addiction, that is something that is dramatically impacting our communities. And there are people who, like a lot of the folks that are breaking into cars, are trying to take what is just not nailed down, that they might then be able to trade or sell to feed their addiction. So how do we deal with that? It's not necessarily by locking people up. We've got to be smart about how we use, frankly, the harshest sanctions in our arsenal, and things like incarceration. So for adults, we launched a program where we're connecting them with treatment. Very early on, we have a treatment provider network that, you know, within a week of getting their case charged, they can be connected with treatment. If they engage in that treatment and they go through three to six different treatment sessions, and it is, again, a low level offense, not somebody with a bunch of prior felony convictions as well, we will dismiss that case and provide that they complete that program. We're looking at things to expand on diversion as well right now for mental health issues. There's a lot of people that are struggling with mental health, and in the state of Colorado, we are woefully behind on having enough resources to deal with that and help treat people. So again, when people are in the justice system and we can confidently say we're tracing the issues back to a mental health related issue, if we can, and it's on a low level offense, we're going to try and get them plugged into resources and treatment. Big deal for us was October 25th, we launched a brand new office in Aurora. The reason why it matters, of course, out of that great big jurisdiction I told you about, Aurora is, of course, the largest city. And we didn't actually have an office to provide these resources that was very accessible for parents, adults, and youth near public transportation. We had a juvenile diversion office in Centennial, one in Littleton, one in Castle Rock, but not one in Aurora. We changed that in October, opened up the doors. It's been so far a great space to be in, much more accessible. Okay, violent crime, told you. Absolutely opposite end of the spectrum here. We're going to the other side. One of the things I did upon taking office was start an organized crime unit. The idea behind that is we've got a lot of folks that are working hand in hand in an organization type approach, whether it's retail thefts, whether it's gun trafficking, whether it's human trafficking, drug distribution, drug trafficking organizations. We want to put our best prosecutors on those cases to really go after the top level people. One of the ways we do that is partnering with Raven. Raven is a federal state task force. We've got Aurora Police Department, overall command agency, so great leadership there. We work with HSI, ATF, Denver PD, Lakewood PD, Sheriff's Office from all across the metro area. Really, everybody has, you know, sort of the best of the best, law enforcement folks are in this group working these cases. Now, my organized crime unit, same idea. We work hand in hand with Raven. We join them as a member. We're targeting, frankly, people that are, as I mentioned, running the drug trafficking organizations. And we want to dismantle these organized crime groups, and we'll give you a couple of success stories in a little bit. You know, recent indictments, it's actually more like six months ago at this point. Huge money laundering scheme with tentacles throughout Colorado with black market marijuana, which has been and continues to be a driver of violent crime, unfortunately. We see this in residential areas where people are renting out, you know, homes and then in the basements, converting them into black market marijuana grows. They guard those things with guns. The people that come and buy from those houses bring guns and make our communities much more dangerous. So we have always gone after. Overdose deaths. You know, with organized crime, you know, when we are looking at fentanyl and what it is doing to our communities, it is abominable. These numbers in Colorado, overdose deaths went up to 1,313 in 2020. We are going to destroy that number when the 2021 numbers come in. And I'll tell you, the reason why you don't have the numbers yet is because the coroners, the medical examiners are backed up still on trying to get over 100 results related to, you know, what were the actual toxicology results for somebody that passed away. So this is a huge problem for us. You can see fentanyl specifically, it's gone up exponentially over the last few years. 2021, it's going to be sadly, I think, well over 800, once we get the final numbers there. And here's why. So fentanyl is a very deadly chemical. It's oftentimes manufactured in China, shipped in bulk over to Mexico. It's pill pressed there, it's smuggled across the border, and ends up in our communities. Just two little milligrams, really, it's micrograms is how we measure this. But just think about the two grains of your Nutrasweet packet, just two little grains. That is enough to kill somebody who doesn't have a tolerance to it. So a college kid who thinks he's experimenting with some other kind of pill, it is not what they're expecting, and people are dying. Just recently, again, from our organized crime unit, working hand in hand with our law enforcement partners, we seized over 110,000 fentanyl pills, 13 pounds of meth, eight pounds of heroin, 24 pounds of cocaine, a bunch of money, and 28 guns, right? Not just any kind of gun, but the giant rounds, extended magazines, a lot of different types of rifles, pistols, in really dangerous groups of people, right, that are trafficking in our communities. And with this indictment, we're able to take off a fairly large organization. About those 110,000 pills, the DEA estimates that 40% of fentanyl pills have a lethal dose in them, potentially lethal dose. You hear a lot about Narcan, you know, again, I know law enforcement carries that around. A lot of folks, well, a lot of people do now, frankly. Narcan is a way to chemically reverse somebody's overdose. I would encourage anybody who wants to learn more about that to contact Tri-County Health. They have a good program that can help your group potentially get access to Narcan.
Quick question. I have a friend who's a narc and is in Denver. And it's my understanding that several hard drugs have been reduced from felonies to misdemeanors. And I want to know, is that going on in your district? And also the status of bail and why is that happening?
The second part of the question about bail is a very long answer, so forgive me if I'm going to pause on that one. We're going to focus on the drugs right now. The answer is yes. In 2019, the legislature passed a bill that said possessing four grams of hard drugs like methamphetamine, heroin, and fentanyl is going to be a drug misdemeanor crime. So lowering it from a felony down to a misdemeanor. The problem with things like fentanyl is that when you're talking about four grams, that's potentially enough, if it's pure fentanyl, to kill 2,000 people, right? So you have the ability for dealers to kind of walk around like they are potentially users, and a police officer might contact them, and, you know, let's say they've got four grams of fentanyl, not able to make a dealer kind of case on that person, it's really a drug misdemeanor. And with a lot of the changes in policy and at the legislature, I would say bail has oftentimes, of course, gone down when we talk about misdemeanors. And so a lot of these folks are getting tickets, or summons really, told to appear at court, might be a remote court, virtual. And, you know, we're seeing, I think, increases as well in people failing to appear, you know, when they're getting summonses like that. This is something that when I did this press conference about our drug bust, was, this has not been a good idea. was this has not been a good idea for Colorado, the defelonization of these drugs. I tell you, when you're dealing something like fentanyl or heroin, sometimes the thing that helps move that person from being an addict into being willing to engage in treatment is the fact that, hey, you've got a potentially heavier sanction hanging over your head at this point. And if you don't engage, if you don't go to, frankly, jail at times where they might get medically assisted, uh, you know, treatment, right? Where they might have a day or two to think straight for once in the first, you know, month or two.
Where, where can we get a list of those legislators who voted for this?
Talk to me afterwards. There is some talk about changing that this year. We're advocating for that.
I'll help you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
And the explosion of, of drugs now took place under Tyre DOC. And I saw it take place when we legalized marijuana, the explosion that took place. And now you're going to spin your wheels because these folks that are dealing and may recover with all the pot shops around, they're going to figure, I just need a joint. Then they go get something and then they fall back into it. My suggestion, I know it is not going to happen, close up all the pot shops, get them out of here. Send them somewhere else.
You're going to mount a campaign to get that one done, I'm afraid. Yeah, but, but to your point about people who are, are trying to recover from addiction, when you have things like Civic Center Park that have to be shut down because people are using drugs in the open air, that is so hard for somebody who is trying to turn the corner on addiction to be confronted with something where they say, well, it's right there, it's right in front of me. That's why things like, frankly, keeping our parks and streets safe or, or clear of people using drugs in public is so important. Uh, back to Raven real quick, we use all the cool stuff here. We do things like, uh, you know, NIBIN, which is a great way to forensically link guns that might have been used from one crime to another based off of shell casings. Uh, we exploit cell phones. They do a lot of work, of course, with search warrants, you know, not just getting whatever we want, uh, but information from cell phones. We use a lot of specialized analytical software as well, I guess I can't get into it too much, but they have sort of the best of the best resources with this task force. Uh, again, focusing on violent crime, a lot of murder cases, violent sexual assault cases as well. You know, here, here's some really important numbers. Uh, homicide charges, you know, from 2021 through Raven, twenty-five, seventeen different COCA cases. COCA is the Organized Crime Control Act, I guess they're RICO in the state of Colorado. These are very highly productive, we're really proud to be part of this team. And I think we're getting a lot done. I'm going to speak through that. Urge anybody to go to my website, likeDA18. We share more information there than anybody in the state of Colorado when it comes to the district attorney's offices. Please go check out what we provide from data transparency. You can see things like what are happening with cases that are charged, let's say, as arson. How do cases like that typically resolve? What is the typical outcome on a case like that? You can see all that information on our website. Okay, and I got to put a plug in, please join my town hall on, in March. Aurora, what was the date for?
On thirty, twenty-twenty-two, six to seven on Zoom.
Yep. All right, and, uh, please subscribe to our newsletter as well. We send out something every month updating on what's happening in the DA's office. I did, I Yeah. Did I do okay?
Yeah. I do want to, I want to ask them to address one thing, and that's just, crime is, of course, I, we hear about it all the time. Um, and, and next week, uh, at the Public Safety meeting, in addition to the plan that we're going to hear from the Police Department on Retention, we're bringing forward a resolution that will have specific strategies on how the city can and should address crime. But one of the challenges that we run into, and Barb Lilly, you just alluded to this, is that we've had laws passed at the state level that are going to create hurdles that we can't overcome. And I just want, if you could just briefly touch on, uh, on that and, and the, and some of the things that we've seen in the last two years that have helped.
And how can we help you? I, I think everyone in this
Call your legislator, number one, right? Uh, we all need to be heard. And I think right now you are seeing more and more people being impacted by crime. And of course, the level of concern about public safety at the Colorado State Roof. You know, hearing everybody in this room talk about how they can make their lives potentially harder targets for criminals and giving advice and tips to your neighbors just shows how much you guys are all focused on this issue. At the statewide level, unfortunately, we've seen some things, uh, passed that I think have had detrimental impacts. And one that's going to impact our, our friends in blue here very soon. So last year, the legislature passed the bill, Senate Bill twenty-one dash two-seventy-one, which is called misdemeanor reform. And what that did was it lowered the penalties for a lot of misdemeanors. It God-rated some misdemeanors that were never charged. Altogether, I think that was a, a sensible approach. But mixed in that bill, it's about three hundred pages long, was something that changed the felony law. And it's a felony law called felony possession of a firearm. And what it did was it decriminalized the vast majority of felons who were previously prohibited from possessing a gun to now saying it's not going to be against the law. This goes into effect on March first.
Does the federal law have precedence over that?
It, it does not, so there is a federal statute that addresses that, but it's not one that, um, usurps our state law.
Okay.
So there are some folks that can still be charged federally. But what's going to happen with this, you know, I was talking to you about Raven. They told me that thirty percent of their cases for felons in possession would not be allowed to be charged based off of this new law change, right? So last year in Aurora, I think they seized six-hundred-and-sixty-three firearms from suspected criminals, right? Many of those felons in possession. In Denver, it was over two thousand firearms seized, same sort of facts. What this is going to potentially do is allow more felons to carry more firearms. And I think it's going to be bad for our communities and, and public safety. So I've been advocating to change that. So people that were dealing drugs, for instance, fentanyl, right? March first, it's no longer going to be a crime for that person with a prior felony conviction for dealing fentanyl to possess a firearm. Obviously, I think that's the wrong track for our state, um, advocating to have this changed. Uh, hopefully, we will have a ground twelve support when people understand that this is coming down the pipe and we can get this changed. Yes, ma'am?
What is the bill number?
It was Senate Bill twenty-one dash two-seventy-one.
Thank you.
Ma'am.
Hi.
Hi.
Can you tell me the demographic of the diversion clientele?
I don't have that in front of me right now.
You didn't hear the question.
She asked, uh, the demographics of the diversion clientele. So I don't have that in front of me right now, I can try to get that for you. Is that good? Yeah, it's something that we are keenly aware of because I'll tell you, a few years ago, you know, we realized that we were looking at our diversion clientele and we were thinking, look, it's overwhelmingly white and it's overwhelmingly wealthier white people, right? And we recognize that's not necessarily reflective of the people that should be in the diversion program. So we did our own self-analysis and we realized that a lot of the reason why was because we were waiting the criminal history for, for kids, especially out of Aurora, that had municipal offenses. And we realized that, okay, that's not something we want to use to potentially keep them out of our diversion program. So we changed that criteria. So we did, we did recognize that that was not the right path. And that's another big part about why I opened up the diversion office in Aurora, is to make sure that we are accessible to all of our communities. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Would you be able to talk about restorative justice and community engagement a little bit more?
Yeah, is that okay? Uh, let me So, yeah, restorative justice, in every diversion case, we use restorative justice. It, it's really a required sort of, you know, piece of, part of that recipe that hopefully gets us the right outcomes. Um, and in fact, if anybody wants to volunteer to be part of a restorative justice circle, you know, actually, you don't have to be a victim. You could be just a community member and a community representative. You can go on our website and you actually apply. Room to roam, a top, so. Uh, thank you for those questions, ma'am. And thank you, everybody, for your time and attention.
Well, P. K. Kellner, I just had a question for you. So you mentioned some bills and I think it's important, are these on your website where actually people can look at these bills, see who the legislators are so they can advocate down at the Capitol? Because I think that's important about how you get people connected. And, um, it would be good if you had the information, I don't know if you do.
I don't have it on my website, but that's a great idea. It's something we could potentially build out so you guys can see what bills we're tracking.
Because that is the people's house and you should go down there and try to do whatever you can to advocate.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to do that plug.
And real quick, that's a great idea. People have great intentions at the legislature, I have no doubt about that. Great intentions, it's just that some of these things have happened without a lot of input from law enforcement partners. Uh, and I think they've, you know, put us potentially on some wrong paths. So I'll happily put some things on the website. I would just hit the Capitol today testifying in favor of a great bill by Senator Fields to frankly give more rights and access to victims of crime, all good things. So they're doing a lot of good work up there, too.
Thank you, P. K. Kellner. Um, I just wanted to see if there's any community organizations in here that may have announcements that you may want to give, um, out or give a shout-out to? Is there anyone in here? I just want to give you some time to maybe, okay, is that Champ? Hey, okay, Champ.
Hi, everyone, I'm Champ Corrute. I'm the executive director for On Havana Streets, the special district along the Havana corridor and Aurora Rapid Lake County. Um, we have about twenty-one-hundred businesses in that four-point-three-mile corridor, majority of them are small. And I typically come to these meetings usually to announce new business openings in our corridor and in Aurora. Um, the biggest one that's coming this month is BBQ. It looks like barbecue chicken near the Old Navy and Five Below, after Parker and Havana across from the Samsees, but it's actually BBQ, stands for best-of-best quality. And it's, uh, Korean fried chicken from Seoul, Korea, and it's actually fried in olive oil. Uh, and they'll be opening February twenty-eighth. Uh, another bakery just recently opened as well, it's a Korean French bakery. Some council members and a lot of community advocates and leaders will be joining us on February fifteenth at ten a.m. And if you'd like to learn more about other events coming to On Havana Street and in Aurora, you can go to our website, onhavannastreet.com, or you can come visit me afterwards. And then lastly, we have a date night giveaway if you'd like to enter, and the details are also on our website. And if you have any questions, you can just come to me afterward, I'm Champ.
Thank you, Champ, is there any other organizations? Library, anybody? Okay?
I've got, I've got an, actually. So I'm kind of like a media outlet, my, I'm running solo here. And, uh, because they're not videotaping any of this stuff, so I am taking it upon myself to videotape these important meetings, both Democrats, Republicans, and independents. Uh, not only town halls, but whatever major, uh, meetings are happening within the community. So if you go to my YouTube channel, aurorideas.org, or Aurora Ideas on my YouTube channel, and then my website is aurorideas.org. Like, I've been deeply involved with the Democratic Party, but I want to get deeply involved with the Republican Party, too, because it seems like nothing is working right now on either side. So the answers come from the people. So if you go to my YouTube channel, Aurora Ideas, that'd be great. And like, reach out to me and let me know if there's any, like, meeting that's going on that you want me to record, I will come and record it and post it on the internet.
Just a quick question, because I don't want to um, if you're going to put this on, on your YouTube channel and people will be able to see who is here?
Yeah, I can, I can eliminate the, the crowd and just focus on, I can slice and dice the video, yeah.
I'm all for free speech and whatever you want to say, but, um,
Yeah, it's just that, like, people don't have time to show up to these meetings and they're not being put online and it's, makes it very convenient for
I don't want to see the camera, I'm like, I don't want to be on that channel.
Okay, I'll slice and dice for you if you have issues. Yeah, just, just post a comment on my YouTube channel, Aurora Ideas, to remind me and I'll do it.
Thank you very much for that announcement, we have another individual in the back.
Uh, my name is Oren Lumena. I'm one of the family members of Urban Nature Impact, uh, nonprofit urban nature band together specifically to address, um, youth, violence amongst youth. So just want to let everybody know when you start seeing our faces around, um, we're really working heavily in that, in that sector and trying to address, uh, obviously, what's a huge issue right now in both communities.
If there's no other organizations, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Gardner.
All right, so we have about thirty minutes left, so we're going to open up for Q and A. I will kind of moderate and point to people and, I don't know, whoever wants to jump in and answer it. So does anybody have any questions, comments, anything, sir?
Yes, sir, yes, I've been in Aurora, I went to college, I dedicated all, I've been in Aurora for probably twenty years. My problem is, is we have to do something about the homelessness problem and I appreciate the police, I want to let you guys know. My problem is usually about one to two o'clock, I'm out southeast of Aurora, people will go around. I kind of walk my dog and people go around and mess with people's cars. And if I catch them, it's not exactly a good thing. But I think as a community, we, we have to get away from people, you got to leave the door open. People can sometimes stop that, but we got to get it where people respect. And I, and I think I'm getting to the point where I'm getting kind of fed up with Aurora. And I used to teach in, like, Chicago and all these other cities and it's getting to the point now where we're coming up with too many excuses. If I walk by a person's car and I see the window down, I don't go and take this stuff. I say, hey, you know, they need to, hey, you know, maybe I should keep the window open. I mean, we're coming up with too many excuses. Police officers shouldn't have to spend their time looking for cars, looking for petty crime. You know, they should spend their time dealing with people who are really doing harm to people. I think as a community, we need to really focus in on that and all. And like, the, the DA was talking about that law about rams. That's the kind of stuff, there's a lot of sneaky people who put stuff out. And then, and then a lot of times people are busy and, you know, we don't know, we're not informed. So I think we need to start doing so specifically with the homelessness problem. Because a lot of it, I think, they're just people, you know, they, everybody has problems and issues, but I think we got to stop placating and allowing silliness to go on. That's what I
Ma'am?
Uh, just curious, because I, I don't know if we have this in Aurora or not, and this is speaking to the police department. But I lived in Flower Mountain, Texas, and we used to do a community, it was actually through the police force, and we did a citizens' police policing type thing that we actually took classes from you guys. And we went out there and we were actually in our own, like, so pseudo-police cars. But we were out there and then what would, what we would see, we would call in to the police officers and then tell them what was going on and so on and so forth. I mean, it was, for me, it was one of the best things that we did in the Flower Mountain area, especially even within our schools, because we were able to stop some of the drug stuff that was coming in, you know, and, and harming our kids. But it was really interesting because I was part of one of the first classes that was in that. But they, they made our cars red and we would drive around neighborhoods in the evening. We would donate our time and actually become to help you guys.
So I'll take that one, actually. Um, at Councilmember Sundberg's Town Hall, uh, last month, it was brought up. Aurora Police Department used to have a citizens' police academy, much like what you're talking about. Uh, this program went away due to COVID. Um, and it hasn't been brought back yet, but it actually was just brought up to us. And, and it sounds like there's a lot of interest in this in, in Aurora. So we are working on figuring out how to bring the citizens' police academy back.
How long was that going on? Because I don't, I mean, we've been here nine years, I didn't even know that it had, had existed.
It started in nineteen ninety-three.
It did. So they were doing basically the same thing, that they were actually patrolling
That's what it was described to and the woman, is she that tonight? Do you want to speak to it?
See, I didn't even know.
Um, the citizens' police academy began in nineteen ninety-three. And then in twenty-twenty, they had to suspend it because of COVID and Mark. Uh, and my understanding is they do intend to bring it back, but they don't, um, have anybody yet that they've made responsible. However, it was never a program where the citizens were given vehicles or were in their own vehicles and going out and doing stuff like that. It was strictly a program to support the police department and be ambassadors for the police department. But there was no, um,
Yeah, it was kind of interesting because, but, I mean, and the, the public knew. And so if we were in our red cars, you know, we had our own little, you know, not uniform, but like t-shirt and so on. So kids would see that or criminals would see that. And even if they was driving around, you've got, you know, eyes and ears on neighborhoods, especially with all of some of this crime going on right now. Um, it really helped our community stay pretty safe.
Yeah, so there's a lot going on. Again, what was brought up at Councilmember Sundberg's Town Hall was neighborhood watch programs. Um, there's a lot of emphasis and a lot of effort being put into starting up neighborhood watch programs. Um, and as was just stated, we're looking for a point person to bring back this.
Well, Jen DeBrow still does that, okay, she'll still do, and we can get you her
She'll still do, and if we can get you her...
Oh, for the neighborhood watch? But I'm talking about, we need somebody to take over. This is the woman who ran the citizens' police academy for years, a civilian. And we need somebody in Aurora to step up and sort of help us get this program back going.
I'll be more than happy to help out.
Yeah, maybe you two can... Yeah, that'd be great.
I just want to shift course. We're seeing lots of homeless tents, tent camps. Every morning when I drive to work, there's Winnebago's along Alameda. Yep, everybody, is it Vickiarn? I'm not sure. Cars, they've got, the windows blacked out. You can tell the same cars have been there for like three, four weeks. It's not moving. Somebody's living there, right? But there's Winnebago's and their old ones, and some guy's got a sofa sitting out there. I mean, and along 225, I don't even get on at Park Road anymore, because you see all those tents there on the, what is that, the north side of 225? They even had a Christmas tree in there. My God, this is kind of stuff. If there's some sort of accident, if there are plenty of cars on 225, and the car goes flying and hits all those tents on the side of the road, now are they going to sue us?
Yes.
The taxpayers, are we going to have to pay for that? What, who do we, how do we get going on, like by Best Buy in Mississippi and 225? My God, I feel like I can't go anywhere.
So, ma'am, we, Monday night in our, we had a study session with council. And currently on the table, I'm not sure if you're aware, it's the camping ban. And Mayor Kaufman, he's bringing it back forward. And we will be voting on that on February 28th. And the public is invited to come in person to council chambers. You can say what you just said. Yep. Yep. So, February 28th, we will be voting on the camping ban.
So I commented about that. There's a church. Chambers and Sixth Avenue, somewhere right in there, that they put a bunch of tents up. And they're coordinating with the city.
Yes.
And I know a gentleman that is like my neighbor that's working with that program. And he said that there's a lot of homeless people won't go in those tents. He said, they said empty. They'll sleep in their van outside, because of rules. And they don't want to follow the rules. And so they just stay outside of them. They can sleep in their vans and sleep. So it's a really complex problem.
Right. I don't even remember the businesses. When I see those tents, I'm like, at that Best Buy, where the boys used to go to that Best Buy.
It's a problem.
Forget it. There's too much yuck over there. It's looking so deteriorating. This is our...
I think it's too, it's like too wrong, right? You got to deal with the people that are in the tents and you got to give them a place to go. And that doesn't just mean give them a place to live. You got to help them.
And we're in one of the...
Well, I think it's important to level set expectations a little bit. A camping ban is not going to solve homelessness. So if anyone in here thinks it's going to go away when that passes, it's not going to. So I think that's first important to say. You know, homelessness really exists along a spectrum. You have mental health issues, you have drug abuse, you have economic distress, veterans issues. There's a lot of reasons why homelessness exists. You know, a camping ban is one kind of tool in that tool belt that we can use. But really, what we're going to have to do as a society is figure out how to, what the DA Conner said. We're woefully behind in mental health funding. We're woefully behind in drug treatment. We have other issues that we have to solve. We don't have places for these residents to go. And so, you know, a camping ban by itself is just going to become a game of whack-a-mole. And you're all going to still be unhappy. I'm just going to tell you that right now.
Where were they two years ago? I didn't see all of this.
Say that again.
Where were these folks two years ago?
Well, there's a lot of factors. Some of it is there has been an increase due to the fact that shelters have reduced capacity because of COVID. In Aurora specifically, we have the VA Hospital, which tends to attract unhoused folks that have veterans issues. So there's a lot of factors that play here. And the camping ban in and of itself is not going to fix that. So we're going to have to continue to look for solutions that go, that work with that.
And I also want to say something, too, and I brought this up at the meeting, at the meeting. The areas that we're talking about, the 225 area, that's run by C-Dot. And then along where I live, I live in Ward 5, so I live right across from the state park. That's also ran by the state. So we have an IGA with C-Dot, but they're, they can remove, I guess their policy is seven days. If this goes through, it's going to be 72 hours. So what I was telling Mayor Kaufman, as this goes through, the expectation of the public, he needs to explain, that messaging needs to get out. Because if you still see on 225, that's C-Dot. And even though we can do it, the ordinance says 72 hours, that may not happen. And the constituents are going to call us and say, hey, this is happening. You know, you have a 72-hour van, but we still see this. So I think that there needs to be realistic expectations about where I live at, along the state park. Are you see the tents?
Yep.
Underneath the underpasses? That's not going to be cleaned, that's not going to fit, because that has a different policy. And we don't even have an IGA with the state. So that's something that maybe it needs to be looked at as well. But I'm just bringing that to everyone's attention, because that's a realistic, that's an expectation that it may be 72 hours and you still see it on idle. And then it may not be cleaned up in 72 hours. So I just wanted to put that out there.
I think these are the two important, that's a very important point to make, and what Councilmember Gardner said. This camping ban, assuming it passes, it isn't going to solve homelessness, right? But it's going to solve a symptom of homelessness, which are these encampments that are popping up. And the bottom line is, we have an obligation to improve public safety. And to think that these encampments that are on the side of our roads, next to our businesses, even behind people's homes, are not causing a public health and safety issue for our community, it's wrong. And so we can't solve all the problems. And we do have to make sure that it's clear that they know the difference between state property and city property. But we have to solve the problems we can solve. And this is one of them. And so I hope to see this ban go forward. And again, it'll be on the 28th, and I hope that for those of you who agree, you show up and let your voices be heard. We have, there are...
The residents have underlying problems of homelessness?
There's a lot of different levels of government that have to step up and help. But we are, we are the city of Aurora. We have an obligation to improve public safety, and I think this is an important step.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I brought it up last at the town hall meeting a couple of weeks ago. But frustration in this, in the population is going to rise, because dealing with reporting situation. It used to be where you can get a report from the police department or the report department within three days. Now that people are being told six to eight weeks to get a report. Now, I don't know if you, and they say it's because of staffing and that, I don't think that. But now, if you have an accident, non-injury, that report will have to be filed online and it goes to the DMV. Did you know that? It's going to the DMV. And then shortly after that, it's going to be going to Carfax. So this is something that needs to be looked into, because it shouldn't be going to these people. Because to be able to get an accident report, to send it to your insurance, this is going to be a long time.
Sir? I'm curious if the city council has had an opportunity to start looking at, or as already addressed, the rules of engagement for our police. And the reason I bring that up is when I looked into this back in 2020, I guess, you know, this is part of the reason for the morale problems is, I, one officer told me they couldn't put my hands on suspect. So I'm curious about the rules of engagement being clearly stated, and the police chief and the city council and the mayor coming up with that policy. So our police know what they can and cannot do, what's reasonable for them to do. Because if they can't take actions, whether it be physical or deadly or non-deadly, whatever, they got to have clear instructions. And I've heard that. I'd like to hear the police if they have any feedback on that. But I'd like to know if the city council is going to address that. Because what happened back in 2020, prior to the riot that took place down at the city council where they destroyed the property, what did they do? How many arrests? How many people were arrested and prosecuted? What happened? And what was the rules of engagement? What did the police do? They just stand around or what? So I'd like to know if something's being addressed by the city council to get that resolved when we're ready.
Okay, so the police are handing it over to me to take this one.
Um, you got blue bloods.
Yeah, you know, it's something. So we are, we are under consent decree. I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but we are under consent decree. So we, the Public Safety Committee, we are, we are looking into, we're just getting into this consent decree. And we have to sort of wade our way through this, see what the effect of this is going to be on our officers, on our department. I will tell you boldly, I agree with you that there's a lot of confusion in our police department. And where does confusion come from? Confusion comes from leadership, right? Or lack thereof. It's no secret how I feel about our department. There's a lack of support and a lack of leadership. So as soon as we can get those two things handled, there will be more directives to our police department. I will tell you, they want to do their jobs. They want to do their jobs. They want to make sure Aurora is safe. The lack of staff that we have right now, which is not being told to the public, it's gross. It's absolutely gross and very concerning. Everybody should be concerned. Our police, Sue will have the support that they need. And believe me, they want to do their jobs. There's a lot of things that you can do. There's elections this year. And there is a gentleman in this room that is running for attorney, or for, I'm sorry, state attorney general, Mr. John Kellner. Pay attention to his race. You know, it was all fun and games to talk about defunding the police until Aurora was left with no police. It's not funny anymore. This isn't funny to you. We are at, how many shootings? One today? I think we're into 50. I think we're into 50 shootings in Aurora. For Aurora? Okay, 50, 60, just for Aurora. And I can't even tell you how many of that is juveniles. You know, juvenile shootings and juvenile youth violence. So there is a problem. There is a problem. And, but, but I just, it's hard for me to say, you know, that our police aren't doing or won't do. They want to. They want to, but we need leadership in the police department.
Daniel, you know, I have done ride-alongs and we have some great police people.
Fantastic.
They're aggressive. I mean, they're capable. And I've been around some of them. They go after the bad guy and they're not afraid of him.
Sure.
I mean, they're undercover and they're, we have some great police that crap them in. They arrest out the back door.
Yeah, I mean, that's the other part of it, too, is they're...
Our police officer's supposed to feel good about his work.
Yeah. Yeah, they're having to call and ask permission to take people to jail, just so you all know this. Just so you all know this. They have to call and ask permission and find a jail that will take them. So you need to know that, too. There's a lot of things that the public doesn't know, what's going on with our police department.
Why don't we know this? Who, why, when can we, why are we left in the dark? This is really ticking me off about this part.
So I'm told we don't want to instill fear in the public. That's what I'm told. But here I am on this council and feel free to speak to me anytime you want.
Who's telling you we don't want to instill fear?
I'm not going to answer that.
Darn.
I'm not going to answer that.
I can tell you, by the way, in terms of the arson at the municipal courthouse, I know that was a great concern. There's a young man that's going to be sentenced for his role in that in early March. There are cases related to those things that are going on. So that was frankly great work by the Aurora Police Department. You know, nighttime situation without clear visibility of who the suspects were. And they were able to still reconstruct and identify some of the individuals responsible and then hand those cases off to us.
You know, my concern is that when you get into a looting situation like that and you have limited number of police officers, you're outnumbered in a lot of cases, what do you do? What are your rules of engagement? What are you going to do? You just going to retreat? I remember the police chief in Detroit, I remember when he said, he said, his officer, he said, "You will not retreat." Now, what does that mean? You guys have to have clear instructions on what you're allowed to do. And the bad guys got to know what it is. I mean, they got to know they can be pretty bad. There's one more right over here. Rock and arts.
Two quick points. One, I graduated from the Citizens Advisory Committee back when Chief Metz first came on. Strongly, strongly recommend you reinstitute that. And anybody that ever hears anybody complaining about the police department, send them in that direction. Changes your whole perspective as to the police department. Secondly, I've been, the Citizens Advisory Police Department. It's advisory? Anyway, whatever this lady ran. Secondly, I've been selling and appraising real estate for the past 40 years. And people always ask me about raising house prices and property taxes. If you guys want to do, want to lower your property taxes, don't support the camping ban. Because our home values are going to go down because of the homeless. It's a simple fact. So it's getting in the business owners' pockets. It's in our homeowners' pockets. So show up on the 28th, support that. Last quick thing.
Support or not support?
Support it. Failed to support it. Failed to support it.
You're saying support the camping ban.
Support the camping ban. All right. One last thing. If anybody gets an opportunity to hear our mayor speak on the homeless, take advantage of it. He has some great insight. Denver wants to house the homeless. Our city council and mayor want to put programs together to put them to work. It's that old biblical thing, give a man a fish, he eats for a day. Teach him to fish, he eats for a lifetime. That's what our city council and mayor is trying to do. So kudos to them, kudos to the police department. Thanks.
Guys, we, so at this point, please be direct. It's got to be a question. We don't need state, please, direct questions. Go ahead.
What's the failed leadership topic of the question?
Well, what's highest ranking?
That's it?
What is it? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Daniel. Thank you very much for the meeting tonight, Aurora, everyone. I'm with, I'm from Ward 1. And I just want to put on the table the importance of, you know, beauty and culture and theater and all the things that we need to have to, you know, outside of all of the negative things that we talked about. And the Aurora Cultural Arts District received their Colorado Creative Industries designation recently. And we have an opportunity to really bolster what could happen with the Aurora Cultural Arts District. And I just want to address the council members that are here to make sure that you're aware of it and kind of make sure and advocate for the success of that area of Aurora. Because there are a lot of cultural issues that are going on there, a lot of positive things that can happen. So if we had your support to do that in Ward 1, then I think the original Aurora and the heart of Aurora could be greater.
Yeah, so just for a little background, I spent several years on the Aurora Arts District Board. So I'm very well aware of kind of the work we need to do and that, and the work we have done. So unfortunately, I've had to spend a lot of my effort and energy in Ward 1 lately. And so I've gotten to know a lot of businesses down there. I've gotten to know a lot of the residents down there. And we are working on developing kind of a critical mass along with the arts district. We brought in some really neat businesses. A lot of you probably know the name Cerebral Brewing. They're looking at opening a tap house. We have several other great restaurants, places to eat, drink and whatever. And that's really what we're going to need to get the critical mass down there. Throw me off. But anyway, so thank you for bringing that up. And it's definitely an area that the city's invested a lot of money in over the years. But I think now, you know, we're moving in the right direction, because we have a clear vision and a clear path of where we want to go.
But I also think you should send an email about the program, because maybe that's something we could do through the Communications Department as well. So if you could do that, that would be great.
So an email to City Council, the greater council?
Yeah, send it to all of us. I mean, you've sent a couple that I've gotten. It's just been scheduling conflicts to come to your guys' meetings, but keep sending them.
Yeah, because there are PACO meetings that are coming up here in the next few days. Things like that. I can send those.
Are there a couple more questions? Dean, go ahead.
I'm going to go out on a limb here. I'm going to ask you a question. You know what a federal referral is for an investigation?
I would assume so.
Yeah, you do. How hard is it to get one of those?
I don't know. I've not been a federal investigator.
Okay. It's pretty tough to get a federal, to get a federal agency to investigate something. You know what the AOG is, or IOG?
Dean, do you have a question for us or...
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Well, it has to do with the Morning Star.
Okay, okay.
I gave you all a pack of documents.
Sure.
Okay. You haven't had time to read them. But it's from the OIG, okay? It's from Washington, DC. What was said and what has happened over there at the Morning Star, you guys, I don't think are clear on what's going on. And you need to investigate this.
Sure.
And it was shut down, and during that shutdown, the VA continued to pay for the veterans out there, okay? The OIG got involved. And the reason I got involved is my neighbor had tried to get a hold of the city and asked the city why the, her husband was continuing to get, the VA was paying for her husband a year after the VA, after the COVID had shut everything down. And you've got pictures of all that, so I went out there. The city didn't want to respond to her, they didn't want to respond to me, but the OIG did, because it was fraud to the veterans.
Sure, so we voted to end the program.
Well, you haven't voted on it yet.
Yeah, we did.
Well.
We voted on it. The Morning Star program is done.
It's got to go through an ordinance for the, to get approved.
No, we literally just voted to end the program.
Oh, to end the program, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, ma'am, did you have a question? Did you have one over here, one of you?
I'd love to say something.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, there's about four or five of us here from Ward One. And the reason we're here is because our council members basically abandoned us. So what's going on in Ward One is, starting back in October, this is addressed to you guys. Okay, Twenty-third and Galena, we had the young man get out of the car at nine thirty at night. Two guys come up, take his wallet and kill him. Four more block, four blocks away from that, two weeks later, same thing happens to another guy, he's dead. Down in the fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred block of Dallas, we had two separate parties, four different shootings, some of those guys were dead. We had the seven eleven store at Havana and Colfax, the guy was murdered there, the store was looted, was closed up, now they're going to open it again. Good luck on that. And then so many of the stores on Colfax are closing. Now, our council member never talks to us about anything, we don't know what's going on. Oh, by the way, there was a teenager shot at Monty Park. All of this happened within a half of my house, okay? You think I'm going out tonight? Probably not. So we need somebody to do something about this. We have never heard anything from the police about what they're doing to, you know, help find these people. I don't know if they've been found or not. But, you know, we don't feel safe anymore and we need somebody to actually come. That's why we're here at the ward meeting for you guys to come and help.
So feel free to reach out to any of us, all four of us are at large. If you feel your council member isn't representing you, feel free to reach out to any of us. Did you have a question in the back?
I have more to say, so I'd like. Whether it's closing the Morning Star, I know that there was an issue with funding for youth emergency programs. The homeless camping ban, I think it's important that we understand that all these elected officials are here to allocate monies, determine budgets. I think it's incumbent upon each one of us, even your neighbors, whether it's the homeless, the youth that are involved in some of these various activities. And, you know, we started an organization, we want to throw our money where our mouth is. And, you know, I do have a question throughout the city council, how does it feel? It doesn't seem like the right time. I just want to impress it upon all of us in the room that your legislators, your elected officials, even your police, I see a lot of eagerness to get out and police the streets like the police. But maybe dealing with the public isn't as much a part of the ego. So I think that's something that we should all take into consideration, you know, moving forward. If that, if that makes any sense.
I know you're going to be voting on metro districts in the next week or so. And I would just really ask you to be aware of what you're voting on. And by way of example, my community has been in existence for eighteen, nineteen years. We have thirty-two million dollars worth of debt spread out over eleven hundred and ninety-one homes. It will be three more years before we can pay down our accrued interest to even begin paying our principal. If you're going to be voting on another metro district that's going to be taking some land, that's already in one of our metro districts and bringing it into a whole new one. There will only be six hundred and ten homes there, I believe. And the debt that's going to be assigned to that metro district will be eighty-three million dollars. So if eleven hundred and ninety-one homes can't pay thirty-four million dollars worth of debt in eighteen years of just paying interest, how are six hundred and ten homes going to be able to handle eighty-five million dollars worth of debt? I beg you to please pay attention to what you're voting on.
Thank you. Is there any last minute questions? Last one right here.
Great meeting, when's the next one?
Yeah, we'll announce that.